So it's been.
I haven't done any of that stuff yet.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. I'll get down. It was doing competitive. It was. Okay. Appreciate it. You too? Thank you.
At the end of the meeting, can we get the certifier? April 29th will be the last. When I stopped my mom and dad, they're one person. And she's like, you're in. Well, I just want to tell them I have the turn on their time.
Oh, really? Okay.
So. Thank you.
The chair will call the April 3rd, 2019 meeting of the city council order. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
It'd be my honor. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Sinore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I think we have a presentation by Public Works and Director Mahoney or... Do you already leave?
It's quite possible.
I think he did. Well, we'll go through... What's that?
He has five o'clock.
Okay, we'll go through the agenda then and he can give the presentation at the end. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense the reading of the minutes of the March 19th, 2019 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
Come on.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
Move.
Moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Move.
Second. They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Move.
Second. They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers 2017-103, 2017-489, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, and 2019-160 remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is 2019-149, an ordinance accepting the low bid.
Mr. Mayor, one moment. I'd like to bring 2019-160 off for consideration.
Been a motion to bring 2019-160 from committee and put it into consideration. Second. They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-149, an ordinance accepting the low bid of authorizing the execution of contract number PW 19-02-87 with Kenny Contractors, Inc., for the 2020 sidewalk program for an amount not to exceed $1,122,940 for the office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-149 on final passage.
Move.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers 2017-103, 2017-489, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, and 2019-160 remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is 2019-149, an ordinance accepting the low bid of authorizing the execution of contract number PW 19-02-87 with Kenny Contractors, Inc., for the 2020 sidewalk program for an amount not to exceed $1,122,940 for the office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-149 on final passage.
Move.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-155, an ordinance approving addendum one to the agreement with the Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation previously authorized by ordinance 237-06-18 to provide an additional $250,000 for a total amount not to exceed $500,000 and extending the date of completion of the project until February 29th, 2020 for technical and professional services for economic growth within the city. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-155 on final passage.
Move.
They're moving second. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Alderman McMiniman.
I'll be a... I think that Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation can do a lot of good and the benefits have been expressed previously. I'll be a no vote for two reasons. I think when it comes to regional county economic development, the other municipalities should contribute to that. Springfield should not be the sole municipality that contributes. We should get contribution from our prosperous neighbors, Chatham, Rochester, Williamsville. And so until we get a joint contribution from our neighbors, it seems unfair for the city with our limited resources to make such a major substantial contribution. The second reason is that our economic development efforts in the city should be targeted to the city and we should not dilute those efforts as worthy as the cause might be to our surrounding areas. We have significant economic development to perform within our older neighborhoods and that's crucially important, particularly for the aldermen that represent the older neighborhoods. So those are the reasons for my no vote, Mr. Mayor. And I... Mr. Mayor, I think your inclination and your instincts were particularly appropriate a year ago when this first came before the city council. And I think it would be appropriate for you to reconsider what the city's position might be on this, particularly in light of the unhelpful positions the county has taken on certain matters that are important to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With regards to my previous stance, as was discussed during the campaign, I think misinterpreted at times, my main concern is how was the new initiative different from the chamber Q5? And when it was first presented, it looked a lot like the chamber initiative Q5 and I think there's been some movement with regards to improving that. But the bottom line is we're in a regional economy and how best do we work together with the private sector to make things happen, broaden our reach regardless of the boundaries. But the pro-rata share amongst municipal share or participants, I think that's an item that could be visited or maybe it is visited. I know we have Josh Collins here and then Mike Avio from the Economic Development Corporation. I don't know if they want to speak to that, but that's something I can bring up to the board. And then Valier, so they can speak to that as well. So I don't know if anybody wants to speak to the pro-rata share with Chatham or the other municipalities and if it's been looked at or if not, we'll take it to the board. I think we have a meeting next week and we'll ask for them to take that into consideration. The city makes up 60%, I believe, of the county. And so our portion, of course, would be larger than what they would do, but that makes sense. I think that's been brought up by other individuals with regards to other cities participating in that manner.
Mayor.
Alderman Redpath.
I don't disagree with Alderman McMiniman on trying to share, spread out the contributions to this thing. But the point, I think, is the reason that we got hit so hard for this is that it's going to be very beneficial to the city more than the smaller communities around. We got to understand that it's better to have the group that we put together on this thing, the city leaders and the economic corporate leaders that are involved in this thing, bring so much more to the table than we can offer by ourselves. And although our economic development department really works closely with the Lincolnland group now, I think things are going in the right direction on the economic development front. So I think this is a worthy contribution and I think we should support it.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, keep in mind too, last year, the initial ask was a half a million and we cut it down to 250. So, I mean, I agree. I think that we benefit even if it does go to one of the smaller, any businesses go to the smaller community because they come in here and shop too. So I'm in favor of it.
I didn't know if anybody wants to speak to it. The other item is that with regards to agreement, there are some deliverables within there. So we did work through that. I don't know Val if you want to say anything or... Or anybody from the EDC?
From my perspective, it is, I appreciate having a partner that can go out and bring things into the city that I don't have the budget for, quite frankly, to go out to visit. So I am very thankful that I have this partnership and that we are working closely together. We're working through trying to figure out what makes the most sense for the city to handle, what makes the most sense for the EDC to handle. And I think we're making great headway in that direction. So I'm very happy with how things are moving.
Any other discussion? Alderwoman Turner.
I fully support this as well because as I believe it was Alderman Hanauer said, when this first started, it was $500,000 that they were asking from us. We cut it in half. But the other partners maintained their $500,000 equity into it. So even with the $250,000, we're still not equity with the other partners that are participating. The other issue I think that you have to keep in mind is that I think that our economic development office does a fantastic job, but working with the EDC, there are so many more partners that are at the table so that they can have a much farther reach. And it's also, as Val said, they have the opportunity to reach out and participate in other opportunities that our office would not be able to. So it's almost like having a expanded multi-corporation type entity that's out there, out there working on our behalf. The other piece of it is too is that when I went and met with them and talked to them very specifically, actually Alderman Redpath and I did, and we talked very specifically about Ward Three and Ward One, but also those areas where Ward One and Ward Three come together. And so we have the opportunity to do that and we have the opportunity to talk to them in specifics about what we would like to see and how we would like for them to do that, to do that outreach. So I think that it's important and I believe that it will really pay dividends for the city.
Any other discussion? Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that this regional economic development, it's been proven that it works throughout the United States. And hitting the reset button with the EDC, I think, is going to not only benefit the city of Springfield, but the area as a whole, we're going to be successful. And I really appreciate the staff's willingness to sit down with us as we go along and keep us apprised of what's going on. So I intend on voting yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the agenda item passes nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-157, an ordinance approving the appointment of Pilar Mayorga to the Commission of International Visitors. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-157 on final passage.
Move.
They're moving second. Any discussion? I know Pilar's here, so if, I don't know if you'd like to say anything or introduce yourself, you can feel free to.
Good evening, everybody. I speak Spanish, so I try to read in English. Thank you. My name is Pilar Mayorga. I'm from Colombia, South America. I'm an accountant and a business administrator. My first contact with Illinois was through my former employer, Arthur Anderson, in Chicago, where I had the pleasure of working with them for 12 years. I came to Springfield in 2012 because my husband joined the Springfield Clinic here. And since then, my family and I have enjoyed a very important stage in our life. My daughter Daniela is doing a master in Chicago and my son Juan is a junior in EFI at Champaign-Urbana. Thank you for the opportunity to serve as a commissioner. I'm honored by your trust in me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? Oh, this is Janet Kitty.
Pilar has been very active in the Culturally Integrated Education for Latinos organization and the Springfield Sister Cities Association. She's wonderful to work with. Very pleased to have her.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the agenda item passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place a first reading agenda number 2019-178.
2019-160.
Oh, yep. 2019-160, an ordinance approving an amendment to the rules of procedures for the city council. Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion?
What's the... Could someone restate the...
If you'd like to.
The substance of this ordinance. Mr. Clerk, could you read what the ordinance states?
Yes. 2019-160, an ordinance approving the amendment to the rules of procedure for the city council.
And then if you go to the proposed amendment to the rule? This was in committee, so I understand that you were... We didn't expect this to come out tonight.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to just talk about this just for a second. There's a rule in the city council procedures that provides for consent agenda. This is based in part on both state law and then also provision with the federal consent decree allowing ordinances to be grouped together for omnibus vote altogether. And one of the questions that, or the amendment that's being requested is once something is being placed on consent, then to take it off consent at the council meeting would require an approval of a majority of council members present. Now, in looking at the rule and some, the way that this interacts with other voting procedures and debate, we probably need to spend a little bit of time and work on this a little bit. And I would, I want to explain a couple of different points here. And I have talked to a couple of council members about this. In order to do technically both under our consent agenda, or I'm sorry, our consent decree and the state law, it requires that for an omnibus vote, that's where everything's grouped together, to be by unanimous consent. It requires it to be on unanimous consent. So what this will end up doing is that if anybody objects in the committee, then there will be no consent agenda. Because in order to group them, it requires unanimous consent. Now, this rule as far as it goes, once it's placed on unanimous consent, it's probably something that as a legislative body you can do. However, that being said, in order to place something originally on an omnibus vote requires unanimous consent. Then even when it's on omnibus vote, when you group them all together, there's still debate. There is still debate at all times, meaning you may recall that the mayor will ask, is there any debate or discussion? So you're always going to have the possibility of debate or discussion regardless of whether or not something is grouped together or not. I'm a little concerned about the part of Roberts Rules of Order about being able to call for the yays and nays. In other words, a separate vote where there might be objection. For example, we have by, basically without, kind of informally allowed people even on the omnibus vote, you know, consent agenda to say, well, please show me as a no vote, for example. You know, show me as a no vote on this one or this one or this one. Now, technically, we are not allowed to do that and it should be a separate vote. In other words, it's by unanimous consent that we're doing it. Do you see what I mean? But if any one person says, I object to that, then that cannot be included in the voting process. So my recommendation was going to be that we, and I was thinking we might have the opportunity at the next committee of the whole, was talk through how this process would work in the event that if this rule's adopted, but then in the committee you have an individual member who says, I object, you could end up with no consent agenda. So to me, I think there needs to be a little bit of thought process on how we maybe either rework this rule or add another rule about when the separate votes can be requested. Because again, consent agenda does not mean no debate. It just means for convenience, you're grouping everything together. And you know, you make motions all the time to do an omnibus vote. You know, for example, you want to group appointments together. But if any one person objects to that, there can't be an omnibus vote. So again, my, I guess my question is, I'd like to make sure that we all carefully understand how that consent agenda works because you may end up in committee where if a single person objects, then there simply would not be a consent. And just by way of information, that's the way the council did many, many, many years ago and we ended up, you know, with meetings that were pretty lengthy. So I don't know if you would like to, my recommendation or respectful recommendation would be to consider, let's talk through how this would work, maybe in the committee, and make sure that we've got it the way that everybody is satisfied with. Because you cannot group them together except by agreement of all.
Alderman Donlin.
At some point, at some point, there would have to be an agreement of all.
Alderman Donlin.
Mr. Zirkel, I can appreciate your comments, but that, what you just outlined exists, that possibility exists with or without this ordinance.
Correct.
No, absolutely. Because in the committee, the point I'm trying to highlight, what I'm trying to highlight is that in the committee of the whole, when a determination is being made under our rules to place it on consent, it has to be unanimous. If we rigorously follow both what is in our consent decree, which is the preeminent document, and what goes through the normal Roberts Rules of Order, which we have adopted. And I just want to make sure that, from a purely logistical point of view, purely logistical, that the committee understand, you know, when it's in the committee process, if there's one objection, there can't be a consent agenda.
I understand.
Okay. So that really, it's really technical and I don't mean to be overly, you know, get us involved in parliamentary procedure part of it, but the idea of the consent agenda to group them all together is everybody agrees.
Alderman, do you want to hear the...
I think that's a sufficient explanation that Corporation Council provided.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
So if we're doing it wrong already, which is what you're telling us, because there are, it's frequent when we go through and vote on the consent agenda and someone says, I'm a no on, you know, 2019-160. So in the future, should that one be brought out for debate?
And again, we've done that, I would say, by general consent because no one is really, no single member's been objecting to that. And so when we literally get into this process of what goes on and what doesn't, I'm only trying to highlight that a literal, any one person can cause there not to be them grouped together.
So if I'm understanding it correct, if a, one council member is an objection to that process, then it moves in that different direction?
Well, it just means there'd be a separate vote. That's all we're talking about is it's the way the voting occurs. That's all we're talking about. Can still be debate, there's still going to be a roll call, it's all the same. The only question is, do you group them together? That's the only question.
Alderman Tylin.
I think that may actually go one step further than what Alderwoman DeSenzo described. If you take it back one step farther with the description that you just provided, if we're at the committee level and it goes nine to one with a single no vote, then it should not be placed on the consent agenda.
That is correct.
Right.
That, I'm sorry, if I didn't explain it properly, that, what you just said is exactly correct.
You were alluding to at council, like if I said, I'm a no on this particular ordinance, but I think it goes one step farther back.
Because the way our, the way our, I apologize, the way our rules are set up, the committee places things on a consent agenda. See what I mean? It's not the council, it's the committee. So what I'm trying to highlight is that when the committee goes through that process, you know, grouping them together for votes, if there's an objection, then there would, then it could not be grouped together. That's all I'm saying.
Mayor. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. I think that my concern on this is sometimes when people come to the committee and we've placed something on consent, they don't, you know, they just figure it's going to go through and, you know, they...
Don't come back.
They may not show up and then you get, somebody pulls it off a consent to debate and you don't have their side to be there to help themselves. And that's why I think that it's important that if something's on consent, you know, we need a good reason why we should pull it off. That's, and we've, I've had people that didn't show up for, you know, they, once it goes through consent, they, it's, you know, they feel like it's done. And so that's one of my, that's one of my, I guess, why I agree with something like this. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Zirkel. We have had situations where people say, put me down for a no on this particular one. Well, I mean, if it has to go to debate, it has to go to debate, but you want to let the public know what's going to be on debate and what's going to be on consent because they, like I said, they may not show up and I don't think that's fair to the public.
Alderman McMiniman.
You know, what's also fair to the public is that issues can arise after the committee meeting has met. A serious problem may arise with an ordinance after the committee has met. A member of the public may have concerns after the committee has met. An alderman may review the substance of an ordinance after the committee has met even in further detail. And so what I hear you saying, Alderman Hanauer, is that once the committee has decided it's on consent, then we have to close the door permanently. And I think that's an unwise step to take for a deliberative body like we are, that we need to stay open-minded to any late arriving issues or concerns from the public or from ourselves and to shut the door, turn the key, throw away the key and say it's got to be on consent. And to suggest to the public that it can't move back to debate for a more thorough discussion, I think is a, not the best course of action.
Alderwoman Turner.
That's absolutely not, that's absolutely not the intent of the ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is you can always bring something off of the consent, off of the consent agenda with a majority vote. It's not saying that once it's placed on the consent agenda that it cannot be discussed anymore and the door is closed forever. That's not true.
I think we're chartering, getting into difficult waters here with regards to that because, you know, it depends on each council member's interpretation of it because, you know, the way I view it, if I feel that the discussion on an item is going to not take place on consent, Corporation Council, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I could just say no to each particular ordinance brought forward so there's no consent. You need a... the consent agenda with a majority vote. It's not saying that once it's placed on the consent agenda, that it, that it cannot be discussed anymore, and the door is closed forever. That's not true.
I think we're chartering, getting into difficult waters here with regards to that, because, you know, it depends on each council member's interpretation of it, because, you know, the way I view it, if I feel that the discussion on an item is going to not take place on consent, Corporation Council, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I could just say no to each particular ordinance brought forward, so there's no consent. You need 100% approval by the council members to put an item on consent. Is that correct?
The, when the, the way our rules work, the decision to place ordinances, group ordinances together for omnibus vote, which is what consent means, is placed with the council, or the committee. So the committee's the one that decides whether or not to group them together. And what I, two points I would respectfully try to make is that if somebody in the committee says no, then you wouldn't have a consent agenda. Because the committee, when it places them an omnibus role, would have to be unanimous. However, even when it's on consent, using the example of maybe later information, or something of this nature, there can still be debate as part of the omnibus vote. The mayor asks each, each time, is there discussion? So there may be discussion that might be focused potentially on just one ordinance. There might be 20, but maybe one is of some concern. So it, the effect may end up being where you have a, the committee, where you have not the inability to put things on consent, or, or group them together, if there's concern that later it somehow can't have a separate vote if there's some controversy to it. But that's a, that's a policy decision. That's why I was trying to say that you may want to consider talking through exactly the steps, because of the committee, right now decides it, you know, what goes on omnibus vote, but it doesn't keep their, a debate from happening. Like Alderman, like you were saying, there can always be a debate.
Alderman.
So if I understand what you're saying, the consent agenda is an omnibus vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you can always discuss anything on the consent agenda at any time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And when you look at the statute, or look at the consent decree, it actually is using consent and omnibus vote actually interchangeably. In other words, it's all about efficiency. The reason that exists is to allow the council legislative body to deal with a large number of items efficiently, and that's the sole reason. You group them all together, and you vote one, and it becomes the vote for all.
Call a question.
Paul, in favor of the ordinance, vote yes, opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. The ordinance passes nine voting yes, none, or one voting no. Chair Lenter Tana motions suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda Number 2019-178, an ordinance authorizing payment to the Energy Authority, Inc., and Mid-Continent Independent Systems Operator, Inc., for transmission schedule fees for the fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $4,661,456 for the Office of Public Utilities.
So move.
Second.
They're moving in second. Any discussion?
This is.
Yes.
Alderman.
This is just the fees for our transmission. This is, this is what we're, the, what we're paying MISO.
Do you tell me to come forward, please?
Don't anybody jump up.
This is the annual one, right, Corporation Council? For the fees? What was your question?
The question is, is so, so we pay, these are for the fees that go to MISO, for ultimately, so we pay them, not MISO?
Correct. It's a pass-through?
It's just a pass-through.
This is just a motion to put it on first reading, Ralph.
Right, we can talk about it in detail in Doug and John are back next week. This is just for first reading, but.
Thought I'd ask while it's in front of me.
There's several items, but they can.
Yeah, these are both the, the fees that the city pays, you know, as, by way of that, but it's also got the, the city also participates in capital expenses for the grid. And there should be attached to this, the mayor asked to be attached, the list of all of the projects, so they'll go over that in detail. But this would be similar to what was done last year, or year before, except that you will see all the detail. The city has to pay a proportionate share for capital expenses.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't.
Any other discussion? All those papers, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion carries. Sure, but we do have a presentation. Director Mahoney, if you'd like to come forward for the presentation on waste removal, I believe, yard waste.
Yard waste. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Solomon.
I may make a brief comment.
Sure.
Mark, before the meeting, about the time the meeting started, there was a comment by our mayor, asking where you were, and he said that you'd already left, and I think there was those.
No, I said, did he already leave?
Did he already leave? But I think the round of warm humor was in relation to the fact that you've submitted your letter of resignation to take a, a very high-profile job with the state government, and so the members here might not have known that when that, and Mr. Mayor, if you want to say anything more, but I just want to compliment you, Mark, for your outstanding eight years of service to the city.
Thank you, and I. Thank you, and I've enjoyed working with each and every one of you most of the time on our. I appreciate it.
Not during the snow season.
Not during the snow season. And I'm definitely going to make sure I get to every single council meeting before I, before I go, so you can't get rid of me that quick, so. And one more presentation, so. All right, jump right in? Yard waste? So, very relevant, obviously, we're starting our yard waste pickup. We thought, the mayor asked us to kind of do a quick presentation, and we do need, we're going to ask you to, to at least add the ordinance to, to the agenda for next week in committee, and then we'll have to pass something, whether we go to, there's a couple of options I'm going to talk about, and it's going to be a, really a policy decision for you guys to all to make. And that's why we wanted us to do this presentation, so. Just make sure. The quick history, and most of you know a lot of this already, and live it every day, but curbside service really started where we started picking up yard waste, when they put the leaf burning ban, ban in place many years ago, back in the 90s, and then there was state legislation that, where you could take yard waste, you could no longer take it to landfill, you had to take it to a composting site. So that's kind of driven our programs to, as they've expanded over the years. Where we are, yard waste history, it's typically been, as most of you know, a fall and spring pickup. The fall program, it's varied somewhat, it's been a combination, mostly the haulers picking up, variety approaches how we've done that, we've divvied it up based on the haulers, based on their percentage of customers, used to be the way of doing it. We eventually evolved to an RFP process, where we'd bid out by quadrants. Public Works has done pieces of it as well, sometimes in the spring, sometimes a piece in the fall, and we've kind of did a variety of approaches, but overall, the system's been pretty much the same. You put it out, and the spring and the fall will come through, usually in the fall, it's four to six weeks, October, November, early December. Then the rest of the time, you put a sticker, you buy a sticker from your waste hauler, you put it out front, it gets picked up. We currently have a system where you, you could use a sticker outside of the free pickup, or you can put it out, and the waste hauler is supposed to pick it up within five days, or they, and they can charge you a little extra than what the sticker would cost. Right now, it's $2 for a sticker, and $2.50 if you don't have a sticker on it.
Mark?
Yes.
If I may, one, one thing that a lot of people may not know, Chuck, you can probably fill in the gaps here, but my predecessor, Earl Smith, explained to me that the reason the yard waste program is so important, is that at this time, we did the leaf burning ban, because of the clean air, and the, the things that, we have people in the community with asthma and other issues, and the burning of the leaves was causing some major problems. And that with the burn ban, that's when the free pickup was initiated to alleviate the, the issue of the burning, and letting people bag the leaves and have them picked up.
Yeah, that's what I said, the first slide. Thank, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Let's start under the first line, felt.
Yes.
Well, I was referring to, with the.
And that's, and since it's evolved, but that's, you're exactly right, that's why it was put in place. The, jump to the next one of that. So the current issues, and I know a lot of you know what those issues are, the fact is, it's mostly outside of that free pickup period. The free pickup generally works pretty well. People, we announce it, people know when it's coming, they put their yard waste out, it gets picked up. It's that interim time where it's a little confusing, because people do, do I put stickers? Do I put it in front? Do I put it in the back? It's varied somewhat, the waste hauler, there's one waste hauler, it takes it in the alleys and back, they'll put, put the yard waste in the back outside the free period, and there's confusion, there's yard waste, it's out. We use our housing division, they will go out and cite the waste hauler, if yard waste has been sitting out for a period of time. They typically will respond and go pick it up, but in some ways, we're sort of managing the yard waste for them. And that, and we often, we don't have any teeth in that, so even if they continue to do that, there's not much we can do. It takes a lot of resources to do that, it's, our housing inspectors could be focused on more important issues, housing code issues, as opposed to the yard waste. The other issue is, you have, we have three haulers now, but we have three or four, you have three trucks coming through, picking up yard waste, as opposed to just one going through and picking up yard waste. The other issue is, is like, so people have to pay that extra money, they have to go get the sticker. So they're paying a waste recycling fee, it's the $3 a month, to cover many of these programs that we have, and this is one of them, but then they have to pay extra on top of that. So there's a lot of issues and complication and things out there that we hear constantly. So we thought this year, as we went forward, looking how we, do we improve the service? How do we address some of these problems? So we were trying to be creative, and Adina, most of you guys know Adina Rivas, she put together an RFP, we put it together, put it out, to see what kind of options we get. We had a couple really good options, we kind of worked through those, through the RFP process. One of the options that we came up with is, there is a proposal, it's an improved service option, we're calling it, for basically, it's nine months, one hauler, no stickers. And the way it would work, every other week, your yard waste would be north half of the city one week, the south half the next week, starting in April, off and on, until you get to fall, then you'd still have your regular fall pickup, the weekly pickup during the fall season. So what it would mean is, you see right here, I use my example of a. That's not coming up, but in your packet there, it shows you the schedule like this. I don't know many of you, if you have waste, you're recycling, you get a schedule like that, or you can pull it off the website, so you know exactly when your yard waste is going to be picked up, year-round, you put it out, it doesn't sit out there, there it is. So that is kind of the idea of this approach. And this improved service is where you'll see, the benefits of it, of course, are pretty obvious. Every other week, collection, it, it provides a service to the residents, there's no confusion on the schedule, you have one garbage truck that goes through every two weeks. So two trips in the entire month, they'll go through and pick up yard waste. The stickers go away, you don't have to worry about that anymore, you don't have to guess which sticker you get. I know some people go to the garbage, go to the hardware store, and they get whatever sticker, they put it on, and they usually get picked up one way or another, but there's a lot of confusion and complication with it. This slide that we provided you, really shows you the last five years, the cost of the yard waste collection has gradually gone up. Some of that is because we contracted more out, Public Works has done pieces of it, we used to do a lot of the spring, but the problem is, based on our limited resources, the efficiency of, of our, our equipment and operation, when they're dealing with the yard waste, the contractors, the waste haulers are a lot better at getting through, getting it done, they can put more trucks to it, get it taken care of in a more timely manner. We can get it done, but the problem is, what's happening, the same time we're picking up branches, we're trying to pick up yard waste typically. And we're usually pulling crews off when we get to the fall, we're shutting down our alley crew early, we're shutting down a lot of our patching crews, the stump, a lot of crews get shut down just to focus on yard waste. So over time, we've had that discussion where it's just not efficient and effective for us to do that, so we've contracted it out. So last year, you can see what we spent for a spring and a fall collection was about, it was $509,306 for the yard waste collection. What it looks like this year, if we went to just doing the spring and the fall, it'd be about $526 as prices continue to go up. We have one hauler that would do the spring, and then that's the two passes we're talking about now, it's in the process, and of course, the fall collection, like we always do. So our thought was, you know, with that expanded service, much enhanced service for additional, it's about over $250,000 plus dollars, you could enhance that service by going to this year-round, no-sticker approach. It's really kind of a policy decision for you guys to consider, is it worth doing that? The improved services you're getting to offer in this, the yard waste collection, or do you propose we could, we can go the route we've always went? But like I said, it's, it's $500,000 roughly to do that, and we could tweak that a little bit, so we could pull it back, like sometimes we'll do a portion of it, and kind of bring those prices down, that's set for this year. But again, it's, it's something for you guys to consider. I do, again, ask the mayor, we, we do need to add the ordinance to the agenda, and really, it's set up with this improved service option, which is the year-round, but we can easily amend that for just the fall and the spring, if that's the desire of the council and the mayor, so.
Where are we getting the money, Mark?
Waste Recycling Fund, so. And that's, the way the Waste Recycling Fund has been operating, we've expanded programs, as most of you know, the Large Item Program is very effective and very much used, we've improved that slightly, allowing a drop-off option this year, as the hazardous waste program is in there, the electronic recycling program, as well as our Evans contract is for disposal of yard waste for residents, they can take it there as well, and drop it off, branches as well, they can take there and drop off, if they don't want to wait for the collection. It also probably allows our Public Works crews to drop off material down there as well. That contract's also going to be up later this year for, for out-for bid, RFP, probably an RFP. So that's how it's all funded. Now, the, where we're looking at, what is trending right now, is we can afford this program this year out of Waste and Recycling Fund. What we've done in the past, is, as you know, with the yard waste, sometimes we've augmented it with the sewer fund, parts of it, we tried to get away from that the last few years, and the reason we did that, because obviously, you don't want a lot of the debris to end up in the sewer, so it just made sense. So we, we can afford it with the Waste Recycling Funds that are, this year, then over time, you're going to have to reassess, as you go through the budget next year, is it an affordable program? Are there other funding options to, to work through? So that's really going to be a budget decision at that point for you guys.
Alderman.
I guess the first question I got is that you were talking about how this will end up bringing up crews and, and work time in the, in the manner of weeks, not hours.
Yes.
That will not be involved in yard waste pickup anymore. I know that we've talked about this in the past, where we were looking at, how do we get more crews on stump grinding? How do we get more crews on this? How do we get more crews on that? Do you have any idea approximately how many man-hours this will free up?
We could probably run you some numbers on that, but it's, those lists of crews I mentioned is really what, and the services they provide. We continue with the alley work, depending on how the weather goes, you know, up into November, so until the plants close. So you'd be shutting those down, basically, the, in October, probably, or late October, so six weeks at least of that, and then, of course, those other crews, but we could get you rough numbers, but it's significant.
Fiscally, where I was going with this, was that we, there's a lot of these different little jobs where we're contracting out the work for the stumps, or we're contracting out the work for the alleys, or the overlays, or other pothole filling, that our own crews could have been doing if they weren't busy.
Correct.
And I'm wondering just how much of an offset we're looking at here, by freeing up these crew hours, it may actually pay for itself, or at least part of it, budget-wise in the line items, where you're no longer having to contract out $100,000 here, or $50,000 there, and it may not be as big of a gap as $250,000 when you look at the whole picture.
I, I would agree with that, that assessment, as well as, it's also levels of service, too. I mean, we're, if we head into winter, we're not able to get to roads or alleys, you know, that level of service, that means that we're not providing it where we want to. I mean, we're delaying that to the next year, which causes even more problems, so it's a combination of all that.
Okay, and then one other thing that I, before you walk out the door, I'd like you to, we've talked about this several times, and we've been, I know that we've had, been approached by different motorcycle organizations, including ABATE, we've been approached by, you know, constituents, homeowners associations. One of the problems that, by not having to do the stickering, it's still not addressing one of the other issues with yard waste, where we've got people who are taking the leaf blowers and blowing it into the street, which then it ends up in the sewers, or in, you know, and it also doesn't address the issue where, similarly, where we've got lawn care companies that are being contracted to come in, whether it be for tree removal, branch, branch cutting, lawn mowing, leaves, whatever, and they end up blowing it into the street. I think that I'd like to see as part of what we're doing here, where we finally go ahead and put some teeth in it, and put some fines on things, where we're. and put some fines on things, where we're actually collecting some money and have that go toward the Waste and Recycling fee, Waste and Recycling money, to continue funding these type of things.
That's up to the council, obviously, if you wanted to do an ordinance to increase the fines. The hard part is, you know, is catching them and they act and all that, but...
Right, well, in today's day and age, I've had three or four of them who've contacted me just in the last week, and I told them, "Take your cell phone, get a video, send it to Mark Mahoney." You know, the video should be enough.
Alderman Haner.
Just to be clear, Mark, this is just, this is not the limbs and...
No, this is just yard waste. You can put limbs, so if you break the limbs up and send them in a bag, they will pick up, yes. Anything you put, anything that's compostable, you can put in the bag, yes. So we do need the ordinance added, if you want to continue with the spring pickup.
Do we have an ordinance to place on first reading?
It'll have to be on first reading in the next council meeting.
That will be a problem, then, because...
I think there's some items that still need to be worked out. As Director Mahoney said, the fund would be totally depleted. So I think there's, you know, as far as the costs go, how do you pay for it? And I think Alderman Tyler brought up a good point, is the number of man-hours that'd be freed up, or the people hours, I should say. And then the service reallocation, what that really means with regards to that. So I think we'll run that, and we can always bring it forward for...
Mayor, I think if we, if the rest of the council is amenable to it, we could just take it as emergency passage on the next council. That'd be the same difference as putting it on first reading now, it just means it needs more votes.
If the councils agree with it, what I'm, so the yard waste collection started the eighth, because we have a delay getting it on the agenda. So again, you can amend it, do whatever you guys want to with it. But if you want to continue with the spring, we'll have to pull the plug here in a couple of weeks, if we don't get something passed by then.
Without having something for emergency passage tonight, it makes no difference whether it goes on first reading tonight or emergency passage in two weeks.
Yes, that would work fine.
But if we're going to do that, let's ask him all the questions we need to ask him now, so we don't get into that problem about we're not getting all the...
I think if you come up with those numbers that I asked you about, about the man-hours, to kind of balance out the money, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
We do have Polly Poskin signed up on yard waste, so if she'd like to come up and make any comments with regards to that, since it's that topic.
Mark Mahoney's a hard to follow. Thank you, Mark, thank you. My name's Polly Poskin, I live at 2361 South 7th Street. I'm president of the Harvard Park Neighborhood Association, and I'm vice president of Inner City Older Neighborhoods. And I would just, having recently learned about this proposal that Director Mahoney just presented, I would like to indicate our full support for this program. I think that, as Mark pointed out, as everybody knows, stickers for yard waste are not a very efficient or effective management of the disposable of yard waste. And we've had it for many years, it's gone from $1 to $1.5 to $2. And I think that while the cost doesn't sound prohibitive, I think it's prohibitive for a lot of people. They have to purchase the bags, they're already paying taxes, they're already paying a waste and recycling fee. And it just feels like it's that little bit extra that people then, I think, sort of use as resistance to cleaning up their yards, getting the yard bags out there, and getting them picked up. And I think the other thing that I think would be important is, we would systematize the pickup. I mean, this notion that there would be nine months, one month which would be free, eight months, that it would be every other week, would be predictable and systematized. And that, when things are predictable and systematized, it becomes a lot easier to sort of follow the program and to get the bags out there and to get them picked up. And I think, as maybe Mark sort of pointed out, I think this notion that we all passed, we all supported, that the haulers would pick up the bags and then bill the residents where the bag was picked up. I went out to Republic today to ask them how that system is working, and they say it doesn't work, simply because they'll pick up the bag, they'll indicate to the person, or they'll send them the bill, and they'll say, "That wasn't mine. I don't know who put that in front of my house, but I don't owe you $5, or I don't owe you $7." So they rarely collect. And so I think that what that does is, then there's no reason for the hauler either to pick up or to indicate that they've picked up. And I, I'll just show you a little bit, in Harvard Park, we do an annual cleanup, and we just did our annual cleanup, and thanks to Alderman DeCensio for assisting with that, and Mark. And the first photo is, that was March, this March 22nd and 23rd of this one. The second photo was last year, and that was just one load in that one particular truck. So these would be all the bags just gathered in Harvard Park, and we did not take them out of garages. We didn't take them from anywhere outside the boundaries of Harvard Park. We arranged ahead of time with Mark, and so there, again, go, to your point, go City Services to come and to do this pickup for a neighborhood cleanup. And you can see the volume of bags, and if you looked at all those bags, there wouldn't be a sticker on any of them either. So somebody is picking these bags up, for the most part, when we have cleanups, but other parts of the city, it's not getting done. And I think it looks terrible, I think it contributes to little vermin and other little insects running around. It sometimes is in the way of kids, if these yard bags get left in, you know, over the winter, they on a corner house, the kids are waiting for the school bus. I've seen kids kick bags and the leaves aside while they're waiting, you know, for the bus. So I think it'd be a wonderful program, I think it's something that we could afford. I would not be opposed, I mean, I pay $45 every three months to get my garbage and recycle taken care of. If each of us paid $1 more per pay period, that'd be just $1, it'd be four times a year. That's only the cost of two stickers, right? And that could offset, times 30,000 residences, we'd have maybe 120,000 that could go toward the program. So there might be some ways to offset it, besides just looking at the revenues of the city. But I can tell you from older neighborhoods, from people who do a lot of the work to try to keep the ignored bags picked up, it would be a great asset to our neighborhoods in both the how it looks, and I think in our health and safety and well-being. So thank you.
Any other discussion on that matter? Very good. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
Back on our meeting of March 19, we discussed a redevelopment agreement involving $7 million-plus of tax increment financing monies for DK Enterprises, involving the redevelopment of 300 through 320 East Washington Street. That particular matter was on consent agenda, we took it to debate, and a discussion occurred regarding the spending of the monies. And certain questions were put before the council, and we had rigorous discussion regarding parking. Mr. Myers was here. About 15 minutes into the discussion, the question was called, I believe, by Alderman Turner, and seconded by Alderman Redpath, and then discussion terminated. I'd like to resume my questions that I wished to have posed that night, Mr. Mayor. And that would have been the appropriate time to discuss the full ramifications of the project. Some aldermen have been familiar with this project on an ongoing basis, probably, possibly for a year. But others, like myself, just became aware of this ordinance when it was filed, which gave us maybe up to 14 days to consider it. So the language of the ordinance itself makes the following statement. And I'll pose this question to Alderman Redpath, because he was a co-sponsor of the ordinance, and so therefore I, hopefully, Alderman Redpath is familiar with the...
I think it's, I don't, Corporation Council, he's educated me on this process. I don't think we're supposed to have direct questioning with regards to aldermen, or how's that work? As far as Robert's Rules of Order.
I'll ask the question, anybody who wishes to answer, that's good enough.
Okay, point of order, I don't think that...
But if Corporation Council will clarify that, with regards to that. You know, that's even with speakers coming up, are they direct to the chair? I think all comments should be directed to the chair, is that how that works, or what's the proper process?
That is correct. The general rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules of Orders, and then also our actual rules adopted by the council, do not allow members to question under members. There certainly can be questions, generic questions asked, but there is not supposed to be interchange between individual council members, and all comments should be directed to the chair. So just by way of just the process, point of order.
With all due respect, Mr. Corporation Council, I don't think our rules of practice state that. I think there, Mr. Mayor, you correctly stated that our rules state that our visitors cannot pose questions directly to an alderman, and that's stated in our rules of practice. But let's take this up after the meeting, because that question is irrelevant to my purpose right here. I would like to know, if anyone can answer this question. I've still got the floor, as far as I'm concerned, but I would like to continue. The question I'd like to pose is, the ordinance itself stays, quote, whereas DK...
Mr. Zirkel, I have a question for you.
I think, Mr. Chair, you can recognize another speaker if you want to.
I thought that the...
I'm not brushed up on my Robert's Rules of Order, so...
Point of order.
As Corporation Council with regards to this...
I thought that when, I thought the only way you could bring...
Hold on, hold on, I want Corporation Council to clarify the proper procedure, if you would, please.
Without taking too deep dive down the rabbit hole, a point of order takes precedence over all debate, but it must be related to a procedural matter.
That's what I'm asking.
Thank you.
My point of order is, is, thank you, Mayor, is, it's my understanding that the only way you can bring back an ordinance, to talk about it, is if you, if someone on the affirmative side...
I'm not asking for a revote.
If someone on the affirmative side asks for a recall, and then you can debate it. Now, he, does anybody on the affirmative side want to bring it back up?
I guess, can you speak to that, Corporation Council?
Yeah, just briefly.
You're earning yourself today.
Mr. Council, I'm not asking for a revote, just to clarify.
No, understood. A motion to reconsider must be made by a person on the prevailing party, no later than the next meeting following the act, following the time the action's taken. However, subject matter of old business, new business is not limited to any particular topic, meaning that a council member, any council member may bring up a topic, if it's related to old business or if it's related to some new business, separate from if there's a motion to reconsider. Motion to reconsider is a specific parliamentary motion, allowing the legislative body to reconsider a piece of legislation for a vote. A general topic of discussion regarding old business or new business would be a matter of discretion for the council or for the presiding officer, and any member or actual person addressing council is allowed to discuss those items that would be appropriate for the city council to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McMenamin?
Getting back to the ordinance itself, there's language in the ordinance, it's the third whereas clause. It says, "Whereas DK Collection, the redeveloper, has acquired," I use the past tense, "has acquired the property located at 300 to 320 East Washington Street." Is that a fact? Is that a true statement? Anyone can answer that question.
So they haven't acquired it as of yet?
But the ordinance says they had acquired it. It says, "Whereas DK Collection has acquired the property located at 300-320." That's the way it's worded. So that's one of the questions I wanted to pose the night that we considered this. Has that acquisition taken place?
I don't believe so, Corporation Council.
No, and I would try to address it, the, it's, it is my understanding that they have some type of a contract or a letter of intent for that property for a specific amount. I have not, I don't recall that, they may have submitted it, I don't recall off the top of my head what exactly it says, but it was for a specific price. I believe that the realtor representing them actually advised the council that they had it under contract or under agreement. And so the, keep in mind, a whereas clause is actually technically not part of the ordinance. Whereas is preparatory, so the critical part is the be it resolved part. And so the reference to they've acquired it, that, and again, I don't recall that they told us they actually bought it, but only that they had some contractual arrangement to buy it. But they have not, my understanding is, they have not actually closed on it.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, if I may just continue with my line of questioning, because that's just a, you know, a small part of this line of questioning.
I have something on that part of it, if you'd let me. It's just what I recall, a line that I remember somebody saying. I believe somebody said the word that the sale was contingent upon the ordinance passing. I do remember that being said by someone, either the owner of Station House or the realtor.
Okay, let's take that as a given, even if that's, but I think the ordinance should be correctly written, and that, so the ordinance wasn't correctly written, if that's the case, because the acquisition has not taken place. But at any rate, it's, I understand the ordinance, the, it provides TIF money to allow for the acquisition. Is that a correct statement? That the...
I'd ask Val Yezel to come forward, but I explained it that night, clearly, that nothing transpires with regards to TIF dollars until the financing is put in place.
Yes, that's correct, until all financing is brought forward to us, there's no monies being put out.
Okay, so now, I want to get to an ordinance that Alderman Donlin recommended to council, which we passed, which basically said that when we give TIF money for a project, we don't disperse the TIF money until the project in its entirety has been completed. So my question is, are we going to allow TIF money to go to DK to purchase land? And by the way, a portion of this land at 300, well, two portions of that land is now owned by the city of Springfield. But are we going to allow money to be dispersed to DK Collections before the entire project has been completed? It seems to me that's a direct violation of the ordinance, which Alderman Donlin proposed to the council, and which the council approved in the last two months. And so I'd like to just hear some answers to those questions. If we're going to disperse money, we're not getting, we might never get that money back if the complete, if we dispersed TIF money to allow a purchase price of $450 to be transacted to buy this real estate. And right now, I'm talking about not the ramp itself, but what's called the...
Remaining parcel.
The parcel that, and by the way, there's four parcels there, side by side, not the ramp, but the four smaller parcels. One of those parcels the city already owns, by research, and the fair market value of the remaining properties is $200,000, not up to $450,000. But let's go back to the main question. Alderman Donlin, what do you think of the giving out money to DK before the entire hotel project has been completed?
Yeah.
Well, anyone can answer that, okay?
Sure.
You directed it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, may I...
Sorry.
May I respond? Mr. Zirkel, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is, the ordinance the council passed a few weeks ago basically said that projects are not to be reimbursed until a project is completed, and there's some language in there about technicality, what that means. But it also says, unless otherwise agreed by the council. And it's a fair question, and I guess it's a question to you, Corporation Council. Would this allow for, what we passed last time, would that allow for this reimbursement?
The, my recollection, I don't have the ordinance right in front of me. However, my recollection is that the prohibition put in place provided an exception in the event that the city council otherwise approved the terms of any disbursement in a development agreement. And effectively, that's what has happened. I would just tell you that one of the things after the meeting, Director Yezel and myself, we are going to pin down, if you will, the discussion about, if you recall, there was an issue about maybe adding an extra floor. So we are getting additional information about that. And so the current agreement, or the ultimate agreement, may end up with an amendment because of the project description, but we're still nailing that point down. You may recall that was talked about at the meeting. And so the agreement itself is that TIF money would be contingent on them ultimately completing the project, because they can only collect the TIF money based on actual increment paid, which means the project would be done, and in subsequent years, money would be paid in, and so it would automatically happen after the project was completed.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, so my understanding, my understanding, what you just said is, the bulk of the money, meaning the six-plus million dollars, would not be reimbursed because it cannot... meaning the six-plus million dollars, would not be reimbursed because it cannot be on the tax rolls with significant value until the project has been completed, and on the tax rolls.
And you may recall that Director Yezel had pointed out, I think, and please correct me, but that that was one of the, if you will, safety valves here in this whole aspect, because they would actually have to perform and actually have to generate the tax before anything would actually be available. So, in effect, it's self-implementing, because if there's no, if there ultimately is no project, then there would be ultimately no increment.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, getting back to the main point, one concern is that $450,000 of TIF money may get dispersed, and an acquisition may go forward, and ownership of property may take place, a transfer of ownership, but the hotel may, might never get built. And I think that's a, an improper, unwise course of action. Now, the more major concern that has arisen is that the, the idea of building a $50 million hotel when existing hotels downtown are trading for $10 million, or $4 million when they go into foreclosure, raises such a significant issue that people are speculating that what's really going on here is that there may be a casino license issued to Springfield, and then this project becomes the, the main prospect for receiving the casino license. And if that were to take place, what we've really done here is, we've subsidized gambling with TIF money, and we're basically taking the casino off the tax rolls for a very significant amount of time. So, I just, that's some discussions that's taken place in our community, and it's all speculation, but I think it's worthy of consideration to the council. So, just, it's great to be in a democracy.
Alderman Tyler?
As I said, I got asked that question when I was on with Ray Lidle on the radio, and that was last week. And you can, people can speculate all the time, you know, there's, it's one of the, like you said, it's one of the wonderful things about our democracy. You know, at one point in time, I suggested that we needed a casino in Springfield as a possible, possible way to assist with some of the problems we were having a few years ago. And if anybody thinks getting a casino license is as easy as filling out an application, I've got a bridge to sell them somewhere.
Is it in a park?
Yeah, it's over at the Y Block. It gets you into the governor's mansion. But it's not that simple. So, if anybody's worried about that this might be a casino in the future someday, well, I think just about everything in the City of Springfield has the potential to maybe be a casino someday, because everything is, everything can go through for variance, everything can go through and be built, everything can be changed. And if you're going to worry about what ifs, then you're never going to have anything.
Alderman Turner?
I, I don't even think that this whole conversation about there being a casino is speculation. I think it's rumor mongering, and I think that the city council should be above that. No one has ever said that that was going to be a casino. It's never been discussed. The, there's clearly, there are clear plans on what's going to be on every floor of that building, so I just think it's, it's unacceptable to even introduce that concept into the community through a discussion at the city council. I mean, I remember probably when the votes were still going out, people were talking about Crown Plaza was going to be a casino. And that's, well, that's been like 20, 25 years ago. So, I think, I think we need to just stop with the rumors, and I think it's beneath Alderman to not only perpetuate the rumors, but to actually start the rumor.
Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, in my discussions with the developers and the stuff, the word casino never came about in any of the discussions. And I, Corporation Council, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if that did happen, they'd have to come back and amend their redevelopment agreement, right?
Well, and very, probably require a zoning change, but I have never heard a reference to, just by way of information, I think the question was asked before, I'd never heard a reference to casino or gambling through the various meetings that I have at least been present.
None. Not at all, not at one point during the discussion.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Alderman McMenamin? So, that's the very reason why I think it's a really inappropriate step to call the question after 15 minutes, because we could have cleared this up possibly, or we could have allowed this discussion to take place in a timely manner, and that would have been the preferred course of action. But I, again, the point about dispersing the money of the $450,000, and then nothing might happen after that, that's taxpayer money that's being dispersed, and so my objection to that remains strong and relevant.
So noted. Thank you. Alderman Redpath?
And this is the reason that the debate got cut off, Alderman, because you ramble on about rumor, propaganda, and Star Wars. Who knows what you're talking about? It's ridiculous that you're even bringing this rumor to the city council. Nobody's talking about that kind of stuff at all, Joe, and you know that. That's the reason that this ordinance has been introduced tonight, because of political jockeying all the time at the city council. It's ridiculous.
Everyone's entitled to their opinion, Chuck.
That's right.
Val, you have anything else?
No. I think it's all been said.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other unfinished business? Is there any new business coming before the council? Alderman Tyler?
I think I'd like to request from Corporation Council, the ordinance that I mentioned about the, blowing the yard waste into the street, when I was talking about with Director Myers 15 minutes ago. I'd like to go ahead and do that, because for those that may not be aware, and I wasn't until people who are serious motorcycle riders approached me, but when people blow the grass clippings, and not necessarily the leaves, but definitely the grass clippings into the street, that can actually cause a motorcycle accident by those grass clippings getting into it, into the mechanisms of the motorcycle itself. And there are several places that I know in Ward Eight, let alone what I see when I drive into work, that routinely do this. And I think that it's something that we need to address, and if we're doing the other part with the yard waste ordinance, I think that this, I'd like to see something along these lines, and I think the money collected from it should probably go to the waste and recycling fees, or the waste and recycling department.
So noted, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other new business coming for the council? I think Council Coordinator Tim Griffin contacted Don Gray's office, the county clerk, with regards to the finalization of the ballots. I think the mail-in ballots and the counting of that would be due April 16th, and then April 23rd would be the certification to the state board, and the last day to request a recount would be April 29th. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then sometime in May will be the inauguration, but that date hasn't been set as of yet. We're doing some checking with regards to dates, and once that's known, we'll make everybody aware of that.
Yeah, because that recount could really push, push it back if that ends up being a reality.
Might be doing double duty, Chris.
We'll see. From what I understand, because of those exact same dates, they can't do their inauguration at the park level until late May, anyway.
Any other new business? We do have two people signed up, the remaining people. First one is Larry Beckham. Like to come forward, please?
Mayor, you had a slam dunk, anyway, but anyway, and anybody else that ran and got re-elected, congratulations to you guys. My name's Larry Beckham. I live at 2735 York Road here in Springfield, Illinois. Now, I want to talk about something a little bit more serious than we've been having a discussion about today, about leaves and branches. And for some folk, I hope, don't get uncomfortable, we're going to talk a little bit about race. We want to put a little elephant in the room, and I want to address a conclusion and a finding that Mr. Holmes made in a report that he gave you guys. We pass this out right by that clock table. There's some writing that's on the back of it. Now, in this document, in this conclusion that he put together in this report, there's a lot of narrative that's in it. It's misleading, and it has a lot of inaccurate information that's in it, okay? Rather than go to the notes, maybe you guys can, no fight. The narrative that's in it, said he, one, I was hoping that Ted Mackus, that he was here, so that we can address any misunderstandings in this investigation that he did. Now, in this investigation, he described, he attempted to put some numbers together with the water treatment plant, in addition with the water department. See, the big difference, guys, is this: money. See, the reason currently in the last over 110 years that there has never been but three black men have a water license in the water department, it's not by coincidence, happenstance, it's through design. Now, I went to school, and I currently hold my license as a licensed water operator in the state of Illinois. The last black man that had a license, there was a noose that was hung up at CWOP, so a lot of memories, it's gotten short. People have a tendency to have short memories. People were protesting in front of this very building. So, the city resolved, in order to make the matter go away, they put Sean Haynes in the water department. Sean didn't have a water license. See, there's only been three black men that had it. Now, let's fast forward to me. Now, in that report, he states that currently that all the water operators, they happen to be white, and there's one that's of Asian descent. Is that what it says? I don't want to miss unquoted there. But he ain't black, that happens to be in the water department. All the rest of the guys are white, and they currently have their license. But let me tell you guys something. Most of them, for decades, never had their license. When they became employed by the City of Springfield, they didn't have no license. Now, what made it important for them to get their license was once I obtained mine. Ted Mackus, in order to get your license, I had to work to get the laws changed, the statutes, had meetings. Alderman Turner, I don't know if you went to the meeting with the EPA. You attended that meeting? We had to work feverishly to get the laws changed with our legislators for the state of Illinois because of the racism and discrimination that was happening right here at CWOP. I sat on the board in the meetings, when they had the annual meetings, and met with operators throughout the state of Illinois. I also, in the recommendation that the city general, Inspector General that he had, had SIU, they donated all the material to me, and I gave it to Shelley Hyderman, that if a person was a woman, that they were African-American or a minority, period, that they had all the training information for free. So, I've developed relationships around the state with various operators, water operators, and most of them, they are white, that we have some very good friendships. And trust me, guys, it's not about the money. Larry Beckham makes plenty of money, more than you, Mayor, or any director that works for the city. I make well over six figures. I got a group of guys, it ain't about black and white, it's about green. They're a group of businessmen that have allowed me an opportunity. They're going to take me out of the six-figure club, and possibly I might be in the seven. So, see, it's not about the money. I'm going to maintain the license. I want to encourage you, Mayor, that originally, when we had the other administration, we had the affirmative action plan for the city. We got it, but it doesn't mean anything. It's useless, it's just a piece of paper. Alderman Turner, you worked on that piece. The only way it's going to ever have any teeth, it needs to be a part of, we got the bicycle commission and every other commission, but that's the piece that's needed to put teeth on it. I'd like for you to reconsider too, Mayor, that that affirmative, the diversity council meetings that they had, it took us two years to put that together. The new acting director of CWOP, I thought he was the guy that did it. He says, no, the mayor did it. I said, I ain't rather went and do that, I rode around in vans, wanted people to vote for him. Mayor, I wish you would reconsider that. We fought very hard, we made progress. The recommendation that your variant Inspector General had, we made a lot of progress. But see, when you close the doors and don't allow the NAACP, the Urban League, and other community organizations that support women and minority, and you exclude them from the table, you allowing these guys to get away with this crap. I'm going to keep the license current. Hopefully, Mayor, at a later date, I'm going to be a senior citizen before they give up that job, but the other guys that came in the water department, they came from other places, Stockton, Illinois. They knew about that job, and the city just posted it. Now, Ted Mackus is your director, he ducked every meeting for years about anything about diversity. So, I asked a group of guys, so you think Ted's a racist? They said, Larry, well, I'm going to tell you like this. There was a reason that it was too dangerous for you to come in the water plant to get your license. Can you believe that? Talked to the EPA, they said if it was that dangerous at the water plant, nobody had no business in it. There's never been a black man allowed from that school at SIU to ever be an intern at CWOP. Hey, look, guys, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, feel free to call me, and good luck again, and you guys have a great day.
Thank you. Next is Satey Wilkins, the Mayor's Youth Council.
Sorry, my speech was written on my phone. Hello, my name is Satey, and I'm a representative of the Mayor's Youth Council. I am here today to inform everyone about our upcoming event. Tomorrow, April 4th, we will be holding the Second Annual All-City Talent Show at 6:00 PM at Southeast High School Auditorium. Here, there will be a multitude of acts consisting of singing, art displays, spoken word, and dances, just to name a few. And if those are not reason enough to attend, there will be also free cookies. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you there.
Thank you very much.
Free cookies.
Are you, anybody else wish to address the council? Is there a motion for a German?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the name, we're adjourned.